Let's go ahead and call this meeting to order. And we'll start with our invocation, and our pledge of allegiance by our city manager.
Let's bow our heads, please. Heavenly Father, may you bless each person who is gathered here today, and let your hand of protection be with us throughout the rest of the week. Let the work be done here tonight come to achievement, and let it be all in your glory. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Let's introduce the zan. Safety and awareness month.
Yes, Mayor Council, good afternoon. We've got Mr. Robert Tony here with us today with Bikers for Christ, and also we have Mr. Andrew Cannon here today, representing those with this proclamation which reads as follows. Whereas today's society is finding more citizens involved in motorcycling on the roads of our country, whereas motorcyclists are roughly unprotected and much more likely to be injured or killed in an accident other than vehicle drivers, whereas campaigns have helped informed riders and motorists alike on motorcycle safety issues to reduce motorcycle-related risks, injuries, and most of all fatalities through a comprehensive approach to motorcycle safety. Whereas it is the responsibility of all those who put themselves behind the wheel to become aware of motorcyclists regarding them with the same respect as any other vehicle traveling the highways of this country. Whereas urging all of our community to become aware of the inherent dangers involved in operating a motorcycle and give the operator the respect on the road they deserve. Now therefore, we the City Council of the City of Mission do hereby proclaim the month of May 2017 as Motorcycle Safety and Awareness Month, proclaimed on this the eighth day of May 2017.
May I motion to approve the resolution?
So move mayor, second.
Do you have a motion and second to approve the proclamation? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Who's here? That's our...
Mayor, City Council members, can't tell you how much I appreciate you guys. This really does help us, it brings awareness. You know, when we're out there riding and we see everything so close, everybody's distracted with their phones, texting, I mean, it just scares the life out of us. Pedro Segovia was killed last year. Mike Torres had his leg cut off over on 10th Street. Billy Vela is still suffering from being hit by a drunk driver four years ago. You know, our safety is a big deal to us, but you know, you guys helping us out like this, we really appreciate it. We really appreciate the guys in blue. Out of town recently, we had to have, had to call on them, get one of our guys off the road and get him help. You know, we are unprotected out there, but we are teachers, plumbers, doctors, lawyers, nurses, and mostly we're doing a lot of community service. Doing a lot of fundraisers, helping a lot of people, and just having a great time while we do it. But the one thing I think all of us do know is our safety is hanging by a thread. And a majority of bikers, you know, I'd say probably all of them, know that their, their life is in the hands of God. A lot of them have these biker bibles. And if it'd be all right, I'd like to give one to Assistant Chief Garcia, just to show him a little appreciation, and I hope all of y'all will accept our appreciation and thank you.
Absolutely, thank you. Can we come back over here and take a quick picture?
Picture with the bikers.
And then three, two, one. Nobody move? Alright, three, two, one.
Yes, Mayor Council, unfortunately, we weren't able to have representatives here, but we will be sending the proclamation to Ms. Angelica Garza, who's the Field Service Representative out of San Antonio. And the proclamation reads as follows. Whereas an estimated 1.5 million Americans suffer from lupus, the chronic inflammatory autoimmune disease that can affect various parts of the body, especially the skin, joints, blood, and kidneys. Whereas lupus can be difficult to diagnose because its symptoms are similar to those of many other illnesses, and major gaps exist in understanding the causes and consequences. Whereas the Lupus Foundation of America Lone Star Chapter is part of a national force devoted to solving the cruel mystery of lupus, while providing caring support to those who suffer from its brutal impact. Whereas the chapter rallied the mission community to wear the color purple and to further unify the support for those living with the disease. Whereas awareness is vital in raising funds for research for those affected by lupus, and it is our responsibility as a community to advocate on their behalf and to further encourage educational programs so everyone affected by lupus can have an improved quality of life. Now therefore, we the City Council of the City of Mission do hereby proclaim May 19, 2017, as Put on Purple Day throughout the City of Mission, and urge all citizens to support the cause of raising awareness of lupus so that we can have a world with no lupus, proclaimed on this the eighth day of May 2017.
Do you have a motion to approve the proclamation?
So move mayor, second.
Do you have a motion and a second to approve our proclamation? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. We will...
Thank you, yes sir, I will be sending this to San Antonio.
Chief Dominguez, do you have a proclamation on the police memorial week?
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. The proclamation reads as follows. Whereas the Congress and President of the United States have designated May 15 as Peace Officer Memorial Day, and the weekend which is paused as Police Week. And whereas the members of the Mission Police Department play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of the citizens of the City of Mission. And whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the problems, duties, and responsibilities of their police department, and that the members of our police department recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence and disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression and/or intimidation. Now therefore, we the City Council of the City of Mission do hereby proclaim the week of May 14 through the 20th, 2017, as National Police Week. And call upon all the citizens of Mission and upon all patriotic, civic, and educational organizations to observe the week of May 14 through the 20th, 2017, as Police Week, with appropriate ceremonies in which all, for all people may join in commemorating police officers, past and present, who by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities have rendered a dedicated service to their communities, and by doing so have established for themselves an inevitable and enduring reputation for preserving the rights and security of all citizens. I further call upon all citizens of Mission Texas to observe Monday, May the 15, 2017, as Peace Officers Memorial Day in Mission, Texas, to honor those peace officers who all, through their courageous deeds, have lost their lives or have become disabled in the performance of duty. Proclaim on this the eighth day of May 2017.
Do you have a motion to approve?
So move mayor, second.
Do you have a motion and a second to go ahead and approve the police memorial week? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Mayor, City Council, I wanted to invite you all, and obviously everyone here today, from our citizens, to our police memorial and fire memorial ceremony, which will be next Monday at nine o'clock in the morning across the street at the police department.
Right here, please.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
We got it.
Next item. Report from the Chamber of Commerce.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. On behalf of the Chamber of Commerce, first, we had the groundbreaking ceremony on Wednesday, April 26. We held post a groundbreaking ceremony for the newest location of Regency Integrated Health Services, which is a mission nursing and transitional care. Thank you. We're looking forward to seeing the beautiful facility come to life. Thank you so much to all who came out to share this experience and celebrate with us. Next, we had the educational workshop on Thursday, April 27. We teamed up with Edwards Abstract and Title Company to provide a continuing education workshop. This was a two-part seminar, which was a Realtor and Lender training. We had a great turnout of about 20-plus people in attendance. Lastly, we had the Small Business Award Luncheon last Tuesday, May 2. We had the honor of hosting the U.S. Small Business Administration's annual award luncheon in celebration of local entrepreneurs and professionals. The room was filled with professionals from throughout South Texas. Lastly, we had the Aguilar's Meat Marketing Ribbon Cutting last Friday morning, which we had the pleasure of celebrating their newest location right here in Mission, Texas. The hospitality of the owners and the entire staff was excellent, and the market itself is an experience to be remembered. In terms of upcoming events, we have the Farmers Insurance Ribbon Cutting on Thursday, May 11, 2017, at 5:30. The location is 437 West Expressway 83 in McAllen, Texas. We also have next week our annual golf tournament, all for the kids, on April 12, 2017, beginning at noon, and it's at Simaun Country Club. Next, we have the Shore State Hotel Ribbon Cutting on Tuesday, May 16, at 10:30 a.m. The location is 609 US 83, Mission, Texas. And lastly, we have the Virtuoso Productions Ribbon Cutting on Friday, May 18, 2017, at 5:30, and the location will be at Europa Cuisine and Events here in McAllen, Texas. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Lucille? Not, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item, we have the department reports are in your packet. If you all have any questions, this is the time to ask.
Can I move for approval?
Second, Mayor.
Do you have a motion and a second to approve the reports presented? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Citizens' participation, Mr. Garcia.
Yes, sir, I'd like to see if we can, I'm gonna ask BB and Bill, I'm sorry, sir, go ahead. Yes, sir, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Good afternoon, Mayor and members of the Mission City Council. My name is Jim Barnes, and I live in Mission. I am an hour, president of the McAllen Tea Party, and a combat veteran. The United States was founded as the land of opportunity, with that founding a system of rights for citizens and a system of laws protecting those citizens soon followed. Part of our laws include that every country has a right to protect its borders, including ours. The Constitution provides that Congress is responsible for writing the law, securing our borders. The people that feel otherwise are misguided and do not understand the concept of a country shared by all U.S. citizens. Aliens that cross our border without permission do not share our values of rule of law, as illegal aliens that deserve to be arrested, deported, and/or jailed. If a border wall, physical or virtual, prevents illegals from crossing, then we should build it. Anyone violating deserves arrest, deportation, or imprisonment. The responsibility of citizenship is obeying all the laws of our legal jurisprudence. We do not have the right to pick and choose which laws we obey and which we enforce. Failure to enforce a law or choosing to ignore a law is a criminal act, and will soon have consequences in Texas and the United States. If you disagree with the law, work on changing it. Until it's changed, you have to live with it. A border wall, physical or virtual, is essential to maintaining a country free for everyone that does not share our values and may wish to do us harm. It can consist of boots on the ground, various electronic devices, ground sensors, and aerostats with sensors aloft. Every U.S. citizen deserves a secure place to live and share in the greatness of the United States. The Owls and the McAllen Tea Party support the border wall. Thank you for your support for the wall. And what is it about illegal that people don't understand?
Thank you. Mr. Garcia?
Yes, sir, if I may, I'm gonna ask, go ahead, sir.
Hi, my name is John Michael Torres. I am a Mission resident, and I work for Lupe, La Unión del Pueblo entero. And I thank you for this opportunity to speak on this issue. I, like many other Mission residents, was really taken aback when I read the Washington Post article that cited Mayor Salinas' comments on the wall seemingly in support of Trump's border wall. And I think that, like many of our Mission residents, we see our city as a welcoming city that wants to, wants to see our city progress and grow. And the, the, I think that one of the things that really took a lot of us back was, was the idea that Mission would use such a public forum and such a national forum to, to use fear-mongering comments essentially, that really, I think, mischaracterized us as a city. And so, we, we, I was very encouraged by the fact that many Mission residents spoke out, saw that article and spoke out, and really, and came together to sign a petition that we put together, a petition to Mayor Salinas that we would like to turn in today, as well as a number of organizations locally signed on to a sign-on letter that, that asks, pretty much asks the mayor to reconsider his position on the border wall. We would also like to, and we have a copy of the petition that we'd like to turn in to y'all today, as well as copies of the sign-on letter. I have a number of copies of the sign-on letter for each of you. Would I be able to give them over at this moment? This sign-on letter is, I think, characterizes a lot of the sentiment of Mission residents regarding what the border wall actually represents to us, being that we are a community that's along the border, and that we have very significant spaces along the border, like the Benson State Park, as well as La Lumita, the World Birding Center. The idea that these spaces would be walled off by Trump's border wall is something that really, I think, cuts to, cuts really deep for Mission residents. And for that reason, many people were animated, were motivated to sign the petition. This petition I have here to turn in for y'all, is 302 people signed this petition over the course of a week, and I have, I don't have a copy of all the signatures for each member of the City Commission. I do have one copy of all the entire signatures, whereas, as well as a copy of the petition language to turn in, may I?
Sure, you can turn it in to Ms. Carrillo, she's the city secretary.
And so, for, because of the, I think, the outcry that this caused, the Washington Post caused, we would like to meet with each of y'all individually to talk about considering passing a resolution opposing the border wall. So we will reach out to you all in the coming days to set up meetings, individual meetings, to be able to talk about this issue, and to get your input on a draft proposal that we, a draft resolution that we set up. And we're happy to hear that the Daughery County Commissioners Court passed a similar resolution, so I think it's, it would definitely show that the City of Mission is a welcoming city, a city that does want to see our city grow, and does not, is not characterized by, you know, inviting the border wall to be constructed in our city. Thank you for your time, and we'll be, we'll be in contact shortly.
Thank you very much. Mr. Garcia?
Yes, sir, I would like to move forward by asking BB and Bill from the Texas Citrus Fiesta Organization here from the City of Mission to come forward. They've been involved in numerous parades since our citrus parade back in January, and we really wanna see if we can get a report from what they've been doing. I know we've heard a lot of good news. I know that since February till today's date, they participated in several parades, but not only participated, but they've come back with from third to second and first-place trophies, and the latest one was, I believe, this past weekend in Corpus for the Buccaneer Parade. And so, we're very proud, not only of their work, but also of the ladies who participate, and their staff who participate, and the parents who actually go and support you all to all these parades, and we want to congratulate you for, for those efforts. But I'd like to see if you can introduce your court.
My court, we have our King Citrus, Dale Merton.
The king needs to come up. Sweated enough Saturday.
Okay, Melissa, Julisa, I'm sorry, Julisa Alvarez, the first princess. Harlequin II, second princess. Duchess of Pink Fleece is Jewel Ibarra. Princess Anna is Gabby Guizer. Princess of Lemon is Victoria Lopez. Princess of Lime is Natalia Boteo. And Princess of Red Red Flea is Katie Zerla. So this is the group that's been traveling with us for the different parades.
Move the...
So, in February, we attended the George Washington Parade in Laredo, March, Border Fest in Largo. In March, also the World Brandy Livestock Show, we placed second. In April, we did the Fiesta Flambo in San Antonio, and we got third place in out-of-town parades, and first place at Buccaneer Days.
What is it that the princess has in her hands, by any chance?
She gets, she's at the trophy.
That first-place trophy, right? Congratulations.
Thank you all, we just wanted to thank you for all the hard work that you all put together throughout these months, and I know it's a lot of coordination with the parents and other young ladies, so we want to thank you for your participation and everything you do for us.
Can we have a picture?
Quick picture with y'all, please.
I'd just like to add to the fact that we're not only here to support our citrus industry, but to support our home of Mission. And we are the home of the grapefruit, and it's known all over the state of Texas, and we got a video from San Antone this year that will knock the socks off. They really talk about us.
So can you see it? I sent it to Liz so she can send it to you all.
Thank you all. You want to take a quick picture, please?
Everybody look over here at me. Perfect, and then three, two, one. Anybody move? Nobody move? We do one more. And three, two, one.
Alright, perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
Young ladies, beautiful young ladies, good job.
Everybody counsel?
State your name and address.
My name is Lipita, and I live in Largo County. I actually come here from the great city of La Villa.
Okay, go ahead.
But I'm here to speak in behalf of the border wall. As a combat veteran, fighting in another country, I know how it is and what it is to secure a country. We go somewhere else to fight so that we don't have to have welfare here in our country. It is very important that we secure our borders. It's not a brown thing, white thing, it's not about that, it is about security. I have a fence around my house. The reason I do it is so that I can stay safe. They say that walls and fences make good neighbors, and it really does. We don't know what's coming into our country, and we make... family immigrated, probably from Mexico and Spain. But the fact is that I am an American. I believe in securing the border, and that's why we're doing it, and that's what we're fighting for. And I hope that Hidalgo County is on board, and you, Mayor Betta, that we make sure that we do have this border. And I know a lot of people, I want to know, why is it? Why are they so afraid of that border wall? Why is it, what is it that they're, why don't they want it? Don't they want to be safe? Yeah, so, I'm speaking right now. You have the floor after I do. Thank you so much. God bless you, and God bless America.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm not going to take my time to pass out some papers, but I do have some papers. My name is Fern McLaren. I'm from Edinburgh. I'm a gun instructor, so I carry a gun with me to protect myself. So, you see the flags here today and the people that are here, those red stripes, that's blood from men and women that have died, for us to have the right to stand here and to request safety in our country. This is our country. Anyone that's a citizen in this room, I cannot understand why you would not want a fence, a wall. Look at the countries that have a wall. I believe I would like to have one like Israel. Israel has got one that nobody's getting over. So, I'm looking today, and I found for Tres Logos, I think is how you pronounce it, they're building a new thing out there on Weir Road, and it's got gated community. That's the first thing on their front page. Gated community of elegant estate homes from anywhere from 100,000 to 190,000. The paperwork you're fixing to get, you're going to see the Grove. This one is in Brownsville, but look at the size of the fence. I wonder why they have that fence there. The next one that you'll see, it's got Hobbs. This one is our county judge's home on Hobbs and Second Street in MacAllen. He's got a big fence. It's, I don't know, eight foot high or so. And this is all different pictures of the fence. This is one big fence that goes all the way around his home. This is the rest of the fence. It's completely surrounded. Now, there has been another individual that has come in and built a bigger home than our county judges, and his fence is even bigger. It's either a 10 or 12 foot. So, all these pictures right here were of the fences, only ones that I could find today quickly. But I would like to know how many of the colonias that are in Hidalgo County that have a fence around the complete colonia? Then how many of the little colonias have a fence, whether it be a barbed wire for to keep the cows in or whatever, or wood, or brick, or block, or whatever? Why do they have a fence? We have a fence because, as the commander stated, that is, that's how we have friendly neighbors. You know where the boundaries are, stay out. Our school districts have fences around them. Why do we pay as taxpayers for fences around the school? Is that to protect the children? So, our whole thing is safety. We want fences. We hope and pray and we thank you, Mayor. I wish you were my mayor. I'd have to move to Mission, so I'll let you move to Edinburgh. So, I am so glad that we have someone that is willing to stand up, and I hope the rest of you will be leaders and stand up with the citizens of Hidalgo County and make a statement. And yes, President Trump, it is his fence, and I love him. Also, I want to thank you, Mayor, for putting something in the paper this last week, half a page, and it talks about the courthouse. I passed you some pages here today that shows that that courthouse does not work. They work on Tuesday afternoons. Is my time up?
I apologize for interrupting. I just want to remind the council that we do have a three-minute rule.
Did you have my time?
Go ahead.
All right, anyway, the courthouse does not work. Tuesday afternoons, Wednesday afternoons, Thursday afternoons after lunch, you could bowl down the aisles. Fridays, they're not open. You could do anything you want to. Those are pictures, and that is not on a holiday. So, please help us, why can't the citizens of Hidalgo County vote yea or nay? And so, that's what we're asking. I do thank you, Mayor, for putting in the paper. I hope the citizens will take consideration and say, hey, why are we not paying this? Having a right to vote for it because we are paying for it. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's kind of unusual out here. Make it short and sweet. I've asked the City Secretary to pass out some pictures about what one of the owls was concerned about. I believe she is true. I have a lot of business at the county courthouse due to being in a homeowners association. It is an underused, inefficiently-used courthouse, not necessarily on the judge's side, but there is plenty of room in that courthouse to be expanded, to be improved. I really appreciate the mayor's ad. I would like to request that it go farther than that, and that the City Council for the City of Mission get together and make a proclamation or a resolution, and send it to the county judge and say, we really need to vote on this, just like we did on Prop One. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, and my name is Maria Esther Pena Salinas. Thank you, ma'am, for serving our country. That was wonderful. We started the meeting with the pledge of allegiance, and there it says, "And justice for all." Let it be known that I am independent. I am not Democrat, and I am not Republican, but I stand on my two feet, and I tell you, I am not a flip-flopper. I vote for the person, not the party, and let it be known, I voted for Trump. I voted for Trump, and so did a lot of my family. Yes, I am extremely concerned about the safety and protection of the United States of America. I am French, I am Spanish, I am Indian, I am Mexican, and I am Tejano. My grandfather was owner of 17,500 acres, and they were stolen, stolen by the white man. So, there is a lot of anger in me, and people say, why are you so tall? Thanks to my French blood. However, as an independent, I am very concerned about the statements that Alberto Salinas says. First, he says one thing, then he says another thing. First, it's only been 16 sister cities. Why do we need 16 sister cities? One or two is enough. Why do we need to open a Mission Citrus Parade with a delegation of the first 20 or 30 units going to, delegation from Mexico? Why don't those units go to our junior highs, elementars, when the citizens of the Council of Mission goes to Mexico? Why don't they take his? Why is it just a big party? No. Those are supposed to be educational entities. I was an international trainer for Special Olympics into the Fajcairapato. And I know what it's like, you travel abroad, and you just, oh, I'm here. No. You have to have all the proper presentation, your business there, and I've been here to gunpoint in Mexico, and congratulations, Ms., I've seen you with your wonderful license carrying a pistol. But I believe that the wall is not the 100% solution. I believe that we need more technology. We are an era and world of technology, and we need more border patrol and agents securing our border. Now, I also know there's a lot of organized crime in Mission, Texas, such as El Reda Boom, El Cartel de los Cementos. Those are the thugs that are already in Mission, Texas, and have no business being here. Why? Who let these people in? Who let them buy this to the race that I want us? Why is a cement cartel here? Is this what I believe building Mission for many, or is it really built for protection? I believe in protection. We have to protect our security. But I firmly believe that we need to offer other options, like more technology, more troops. And yeah, maybe this judge has had this high fence because, in our last case, I remember, he took this with a hazardous chemical contamination. He took our people for 71%. So, yeah, maybe he should have a border wall because he's afraid of his own plaintiffs. But anyway, those are my words. Thank you to everybody, and God bless America.
Thank you. Virginia?
Hello. I'm Virginia Townsend, Michigan, Texas. I think you all know how much I love Mission. I've shown it through many years. However, I don't love downtown North Conway. I love economic development, and I love what we're doing with the event center and everything on South Sherry, but I don't like downtown. I don't know what we're going to do about it. I don't know how hard it is to get businesses that would fix it up and stay, but we need to do something. To me, to have the rest of the city really pretty, nice-looking, and have that stretch just absolutely ugly, as ugly as can be. I tried to count the loan offices. I gave up. But what I really can't stand is the big businesses that have the broken glass, and it's just taped and left there. I don't know. There's just got to be something better. So, if we're going to do economic development, I would like to see it kind of put on downtown Mission. Sorry, sounds like I don't love Mission, but I do. Otherwise, I wouldn't care. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else that would like to alert the council? Go ahead, Joe.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. Thank you, and I beg your indulgence. My name is Dave Asher. I'm from your neighbor city, McAllen, and I consider myself an unhyphenated American. Rather than compose some words about a subject that came up a little earlier, I would just like to read what the former president had to say about the subject. Those who enter the country illegally disrespect the rule of law, and they are showing disregard for those who are following the law. We simply cannot allow people to pour into the United States undetected, undocumented, unchecked, and more importantly, circumventing the line of people waiting patiently, diligently, and lawfully to become immigrants. I've been through this process, not as an American, but my wife is an immigrant, a lawful permanent resident, and I can tell you what a struggle that is to go through that process, emotionally, mentally, and financially, the cost that we bore. I have to agree wholeheartedly with President Obama. It shows complete disregard for the thousands and tens of thousands of us that have gone through that process and done it the right way. Thank you for giving me a moment.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Hi, good afternoon, council. My name is Medhi Gomez. I am a business owner here in Mission, Texas, and have been a resident since 1989. Moved here from Austin, Texas, with an entrepreneur father that hopefully all of you all know. I wanted to talk a little bit about the border wall because a lot of people are talking about its economic, its immigration, and one of the things that I noticed was one of the largest infrastructures that's already in existence, which is the Expressway. The Expressway, now, I've had the privilege of living at Cimarron, and I've had the privilege of living at the golf course. And by the way, the Sherry Golf Course here on Mayberry is one of the most beautiful treasures that we have here in Mission, and many people do not have fences. And we are very happy there, and we all get along, and we all trust each other. One, because we are all there for a common goal, which is to reside and live happily. The infrastructure of the Expressway has created an environmental factor. At Cimarron, there are tons of insects, tons of snakes, alligators, and the highway has prevented their immigration or their migration, because they're not people, they don't immigrate. They migrate north of that. So, one of the better areas of Mission is between the Expressway and 495 and between, you know, in the Sherry, between McAllen and Palmview. Beautiful environment. We don't get those huge snakes, alligators, and whatever other reptiles that come with the environment. What the border wall may do is have a huge environmental impact. So, I only come here to ask you all to consider the environment because we are for the Butterfly Center. We are a huge area where a lot of insects migrate through. I know that I have seen through social media some eco-friendly bridges, if there is some kind of eco-friendly bridge, just to take into consideration the environment. The environment is something that is neglected. We are thinking about us, and there are shamefully some people who are showing these giant border walls that people have created on their own property. But you know what? They have the privilege to protect their own assets. And you know what? If they want to, go for it. But taxation is the redistribution of wealth and our price that we pay for living in an organized society. And so, I would ask that we take into consideration those who cannot speak for themselves, which are the animals in our environment.
Thank you.
Okay? Thanks.
Go ahead. State your name and address, please.
Yes, my name is Charlie Van Riden, and I live in Mission, Texas. And one thing that isn't brought up here yet tonight is the cost of drugs and human trafficking that this wall will prevent. You know, if we can spare any family the pain of watching some of their siblings be addicted to drugs and then die from it, and let alone the human trafficking that goes on. And I think a wall will go a long ways in preventing some of that sort of stuff. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else who would like to alert the council, not having to do anything with our agenda today? Well, thank you all very much. I lost control of the agenda here. Everybody just got up and said, and I'm glad they had enough time to say what they wanted to say. So, now we are going to move on to our public hearing, and we're going to ask Mr. Asorel to start with 1.1A.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Out of 1.1A is a public hearing for rezoning of a tract of land containing 1.783 acres of land, being a part or portion of a 2.19 acre tract of land, being the north 71.41 feet of the south 142.82 feet of the north acres out of Lot 172 Johnny H. Sherry subdivision, and a portion of an abandoned canal right of way lying west of the adjacent of Lot 172 Johnny H. Sherry subdivision. The current zoning on this property is agricultural, open, permanent, and the request is to rezone to townhouse residential. The applicant is Mario Rodriguez, and if the council is inclined to approve this rezoning, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. On April 26, 2017, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this rezoning request. The property is located approximately quarter mile north of US Expressway 83 along the west side of Glasscock Road. The surrounding zonings to the subject property include townhome residential to the north, single-family residential to the east, townhome residential to the west, and agricultural, open, permanent to the south. The future land use map does reflect this area as a general land use, general commercial land use, although this future land use map could also be amended to reflect the R1T or townhome residential district use. There was no public opposition during the PNC meeting. The board unanimously approved this rezoning request. Staff is recommending approval, as is the planning commission and our city manager. This is a public hearing. This item is now before you.
Anybody in favor or against this request? Anybody in favor or against? If not, we ask that we go ahead and accept the recommendation for the rezoning and also adopt ordinance 4509.
I'll move, Mayor.
Second.
We have motion and a second. All those in favor? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Yes, motion carries. Item B.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Item 1.1B is a public hearing for rezoning for a tract of land containing .377 acres of land, being a part or portion of a 2.19 acre tract of land, being the north 71.41 feet of the south 142.82 feet of the north, eight acres, out of Lot 172 John H. Sherry subdivision, and a portion of an abandoned canal right-of-way lying west of the adjacent to Lot 172 John H. Sherry subdivision. The current zoning is a single-family residential, and the request is to rezone to townhome residential. The applicant is Mario Rodriguez, and if the council is inclined to approve this rezoning, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. On April 26, 2017, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this rezoning request. The property is located approximately quarter mile north of US Expressway 83 along the west side of Glasscock. Mayor and Council, this is a portion of land abutting of property that was just approved under item 1.1A, and the property fronts Glasscock. It's a separate piece of property. That's why we're presenting it as a separate item. The surrounding zones include townhome residential to the north and to the west, and to the east there's single-family residential, and to the south it's agriculture, open, permanent. The future land use map does reflect a general commercial land use, although the future land use map can be amended to reflect the townhome use. There was no public opposition during the P&amp;Z, and the board unanimously recommended approval. Staff is recommending approval, as is the planning commission and our city manager. This is a public hearing. This item is now before you.
Anybody in favor or against this request? Anybody in favor or against? If not, we ask to go ahead and accept the recommendation and approve ordinance 4510.
So I'll move, Mayor.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. We'll go to item C.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Item 1.1C is a public hearing for a conditional use permit for a drive-through service window at 100% Antojitos Mexicanos. The address is 301 West Griffin Parkway Suite 1, being Lot 1D of Mission Park Plaza subdivision. The property is owned general commercial, C3, and the applicant is 100% Antojitos Mexicanos. And if the council is inclined to approve this conditional use permit, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. On May 26, 2017, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this conditional use permit. The 1,402 square foot restaurant is located within the Commercial Plaza approximately 800 feet west of Conway along the south side of Griffin Parkway. The CUP was most recently approved in May of 2014 for the drive-through service window, and at that time, it was given a, an approval for three years. And this is, this particular Antojitos Mexicanos has been in operation since 2012. The hours of operation are Monday through Thursday from 10:30 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., and Friday and Saturday from 10:30 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. They employ a total of 10 employees, and parking and landscaping are existing and meet code. There was no public opposition during the P&amp;Z meeting, and the board unanimously recommended approval. Staff is recommending approval for life for use of the CUP, subject to the drive-through window not being transferable to others. Our Planning and Zoning Commission and city manager are also recommending approval for life for use. This is a public hearing. This matters now before you.
Anybody in favor or against this request? Anybody in favor or against? If not, we ask to go ahead and accept the
I move to approve, Mayor.
Conditional use permit and also ordinance 4511. We do have a motion and a second to approve. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. That one is Mission Park Plaza, right?
No, this one is the one in, off of 495 by the old Cars Building.
Yes.
Yeah.
And then the other one that we have coming is?
The next one is the one off of the Expressway on Sherry and
The Expressway.
By the Cimarron. Item 1.1D is a public hearing for a conditional use permit for a drive-through service window at 100% Antojitos Mexicanos at 2306 East Expressway 83, being Suites 1 and 2 of Lot 1, Cimarron Crossing Phase 1 subdivision. The property is owned general commercial, C3, and the applicant is 100% Antojitos Mexicanos. And if the council is inclined to approve this conditional use permit, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. On April 26, 2017, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this conditional use permit. The subject site is located at the southeast corner of JR Drive and Expressway 83. The existing plaza has several suites, and the restaurant is located at the east end of the plaza, and it also has the drive-through window along the eastern side of, of the, of the plaza. The CUP was most recently approved in May 2014 for a period of three years, and I will note that this particular restaurant has been in operation since 2006. The hours of operation are Monday through Thursday from 10:30 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., and Friday and Saturday from 10:30 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. They employ a total of eight to 10 employees during any given shift, and parking and landscaping are, are existing and they do meet code. There was no public opposition during the P&amp;Z meeting, and the board unanimously recommended approval. Staff is recommending approval for life for use, subject to the CUP not being transferable to others. Our Planning and Zoning Commission and our city manager are also recommending life for use. This is a public hearing. This matters now before you.
Anybody in favor or against this request? Anybody in favor or against? If not, we ask to, we accept the recommendation.
I move for approval.
Second.
And also approve our ordinance 4512. We do have a motion and a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Item 1.1E is a public hearing for a conditional use permit for the sale and anti-consumption of alcoholic beverages at 100% Antojitos Mexicanos at 2306 East Expressway 83, being Suites 1 and 2 of Lot 1, Cimarron Crossing Phase 1 subdivision. The current zoning is C3 general commercial, and the applicant is 100% Antojito Mexicanos. And if the council is inclined to approve this conditional use permit, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. On April 26, 2017, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this conditional use permit request. The subject site is located at the southeast corner of JR Drive and Expressway 83. This is the same location that we just approved the drive-through service window for life for use. However, when it comes to the set of alcohol, our recommendation is that we approve the CUP for a period of now until October 7, 2018, at which, at which time the TABC license will expire. There was no public opposition during the P&amp;Z meeting. The board unanimously recommended approval. Staff is recommending approval, subject to the CUP, to be valid for a period of now until October 7, 2018, at which time the applicant will have to renew their TABC license and conditional use permit. Our Planning and Zoning Commission and city manager are also recommending approval. This is a public hearing. This item is now before you.
Anybody in favor or against this request? Anybody in favor or against? If not, ask to go ahead and accept the recommendation and adopt ordinance 4513.
I move to approve.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Item 1.1F is a public hearing for a conditional use permit for an auto mechanic shop in an AOI zone. The address is 1603 Adams Street, and the zoning is AOI. This is a .85 acre tract of land out of Lot 23-1 West Edition and Sherrillan subdivision. The applicant, Marco A. Nohosa, is requesting a CUP to be granted at this location. If the council is inclined to approve this conditional use permit, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. On April 26, 2017, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this conditional use permit request. The site is located 105 feet north of West 18th Street along the west side of Adams Street. The site currently has a masonry building with four bays for auto mechanic work. The CUP was last approved on May 14 of 2014 for a period of three years. I did do some research at this location, and what we found was that this particular shop has been in existence since 1986. However, Mr. Nohosa purchased the property in 2013, at which time he applied for a conditional use permit to keep the auto mechanic shop in use. The days and hours of operation are Monday through Saturday from 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., and he employs two other people to help him at the shop. There is a large parking area available for customer parking, which is enough to occupy 10 parking spaces. And we're recommending, the staff is recommending approval for three years, subject to complying with all fire and building codes. Our planning commission and city manager are also recommending approval for three years. This is a public hearing. This item is now before you.
Anybody in favor or against this request? Anybody in favor or against? If not, the recommendation, we ask to go ahead and approve the recommendation and an ordinance 4514.
So I'll move, Mayor.
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Item G.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Item 1.1G is a public hearing for discussion and action to amend the Mission Code of Ordinances, Appendix A, zoning, Article X, Section 1.56-2, when it comes to mobile homes and portable buildings, by adding subsection G. And if the council is inclined to amend the city ordinance, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. On April 26, 2017, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider amending the Mission Code of Ordinances by adding subsection G, which states that the sale of food and beverages or other snacks from a portable building is prohibited. Mayor and Council, what this amendment will do is to clarify and provide more specifics as to what items are to be sold from a portable building. There was no public opposition during the P&amp;Z meeting. The board unanimously recommended approval. Staff is recommending approval, as is the planning commission and our city manager. This is a public hearing. This item is now before you.
Anybody in favor or against this request? Anybody in favor or against? If not, we accept the recommendation and adopt ordinance 4515.
Antojitos. What is it?
It means a little taquito. Or
What is it?
A snack.
A snack?
A craving.
A craving.
Yeah.
A what?
A craving.
Craving.
Something you crave, one of those.
Antojito, yeah.
Okay.
Bye. Did we get a motion on item G?
So I'll move, Mayor.
Second.
Do we have a motion and a second to, to accept the recommendation and also adopt ordinance 4515? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Thank you. Let's position the minutes. We have a meeting that we have for the city council on April the 24th of 2017.
I move for approval, Mayor.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. We also had the minutes, minutes for the, that we have to organize for the Mission Historical Museum on March the 20th of 2017, and a special meeting on March the 25th of 2017. The Mission Economic Development Corporation had a meeting on March the 21st of 2017. The Mission Redevelopment Authority had a meeting on March the 28th of 2017. The Mission Tax Increment Reinvestment Zone had a meeting on March the 28th of 2017, and our Planning and Zoning Commission had a meeting on April the 12th of 2017. Sherry Golf Course Advisory Board had a meeting on March the 14th of 2017. We do have to acknowledge those minutes, so I need a motion to acknowledge those minutes.
I'll move.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. We go on to item 4.1. Mr. Asoreto.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Item 4.1 is a preliminary plat for a replat of lots 3 and 4, Store Plaza subdivision, being 3.057 acres of land and all of lots 3 and 4 of Store Plaza subdivision. The property is currently zoned C3, and the developer is Cantares Enterprises. The engineer is Vanguard Engineering. On April 26, 2017, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this preliminary plat approval and final plat approval for the replat of lots 3 and 4, Store Plaza subdivision. The proposed subdivision is located at the southwest area of Stewart Road and Expressway 83 along the Frontage Road. The subdivision consists of two existing commercial lots that are going to be divided into 17 individual lots. The developer has created a written declaration of restrictions. These restrictions address concerns that came up during the P&amp;Z meeting. Such concerns were the parking lot maintenance, the parking lot use, and even the size of the parking lot. Other items addressed in the restrictions are the location of the trash bins, the access cuts, the landscaping, to even the color of the buildings. With regards to utilities, a field visit revealed that each lot has its own water, sewer, and electrical connections and meters. With regards to streets and storms, this is a simple replat. Any additional right-of-way required along Expressway 83 and/or Stewart Road has already been dedicated, and drainage is existing on-site. Other comments, since the subdivision is commercial, no park fees are required. Store Plaza subdivision is already excluded from the water district, but they must comply with all format findings, and we do note that street lighting already exists. The board unanimously recommended approval, as per staff's recommendation. Staff is recommending approval, subject to complying with all typical format findings and recording of the restrictions. Our city manager, fire chief, public works director, and city engineer are also recommending approval. Item 4.1 is now before you.
Anybody in favor or against this request?
Here, I make a motion that we accept this preliminary plat.
Okay, yeah, we don't have, this is not an action. We do have a motion to go ahead and approve the preliminary plat.
Second.
Second.
Have a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Is this preliminary and final, or this preliminary plat only?
Is it preliminary plat?
It's preliminary. To be preliminary, because it doesn't say anything about final on this.
Preliminary plat. Alex.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This item on requesting the Mission EDC seeking authorization to purchase restaurant equipment for a coffee shop to be housed at the seed building via by, via state byboard contract number 59-16 from First Choice Restaurant Supply.
So I'll move, Mayor.
Second.
Do we have a motion and a second to go ahead and authorize for the purchase of the restaurant equipment? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Thank you.
Chief Dominguez, 4.3. Your body cameras.
Mayor, City Council, the City Mission Police Department is requesting authorization to purchase a total of 158 police body cameras via byboard contract 524-17. Our organization was awarded a body camera grant by the Office of the Governor in the amount of $152,889.45. The total of the grant project is $193,430. The remaining amount of $40,540.55 will be paid through our federal drug forfeiture account. The body cameras will be utilized by all sworn police officers to document contacts with the general public. Staff respectfully requests authorization to purchase the body cameras.
So I'll move, Mayor.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to go ahead and authorize the purchase of the body cameras for police officers. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. 4.4, Chief.
The City Mission Police Department is requesting authorization to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the Lower Rio Grande Valley Development Council for the Basic Peace Officer Training Academy, peace officer training, and required training for all Mission police personnel as required by the Texas Commission on Law Enforcement. The establishment of this memorandum of understanding will benefit the City of Mission Police Department in that it will provide police academy training to City of Mission-sponsored police cadets, and the required in-service training required by the Texas Commission on Law Enforcement to our current staff of 157 police officers. Staff is recommending the authorization be granted to engage in the MOU with LRGBDC.
Do we need a motion to go ahead and
So I'll move, Mayor.
Second.
Do we have a motion and a second to go ahead and authorize to enter into the memorandum contract, the Development Council? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. We do have 4.5. Mr. Sanchez.
Mayor and Council, the Mission Fire Department Fire Prevention Bureau is seeking authorization to apply for the 2016 Fire Prevention and Safety Grant through the Assistance of Firefighters Grant Program. The department will apply for equivalent for the Fire Prevention Division Fire Educational Program in the amount of $9,609. Program in the amount of nine thousand, six hundred and nine dollars and ninety-two cents. There is a five percent match of funds required for the, of the amount of five hundred and five dollars and seventy-nine cents, which brings the total amount to ten thousand, one hundred and fifteen and seventy-one cents. Staff recommendations authorized to apply for the grant.
We do need a motion to authorize them.
So moved.
Second.
Do we have a motion and a second to authorize them to go ahead and apply for the grant? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Four point six, Mr. Tresso.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. I come before you to present item four point six, Authorization to Solicit Bits for Seal Code Payment Services on As Needed Basis. Staff is seeking authorization to solicit bits to Seal Code Asphalt Payment Streets throughout the City of Mission for Public Works Department. The objective is to obtain services for Seal Code to cover repairs, maintenance, extend the life of the payment, and make it, and make a uniform to the City of Mission on as needed basis. Staff recommendation to solicit for bits.
Okay. We do need a motion to go ahead and authorize them to solicit for bits.
So moved, Mayor.
Second.
The motion is second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor. I also have item four point seven.
Okay.
Authorization to solicit bits for reconstruction, for the construction of West Can Lane, Snowbird State Subdivision. Staff is seeking authorization to solicit bits for the construction of a thirty-foot curb-and-gutter pavement street for West Can Lane. Improvements includes two inches of asphalt pavement, eight inches of caliche, six inches of subgrade, utility adjustments, and storm drainage system. Project is in the vicinity of Benson Road, approximately one block south of Mile One South. Staff recommendation to solicit for bits.
You're going to solicit for bits for the hard bits?
For the construction of the street, Mayor.
Are you going to find somebody to do it for you?
That's correct, sir.
You're not going to do it in-house?
No, this one includes not only the, the subgrading and the utility adjustments, but also the actual drainage system as well, Mayor. This is a street that, that we adopted approximately about...
Oh, yes.
A year ago.
Would there be a motion to go ahead and authorize them to go out on bits?
So moved.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you.
Four point eight.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Next item is Authorization to Purchase Via Soul Source from Recorded Books for Electronic Services and Library Material. We are asking for authorization to purchase electronic services and library material from Recorded Books to begin an electronic library that would make electronic magazines, books, audiobooks, and comic books available for checkup from a computer or electronic device, as long as they have a library card from one of the public libraries in Hidalgo County. Recorded Books developed a wholly-owned proprietary platform named RB Digital Gateway to host e-audiobooks, ebooks, and digital magazines for use by libraries. Recorded Books is a soul-source supplier of RB Digital Gateway. To public libraries, an RB Digital Gateway is only available from Recorded Books. The goal of this project is to improve literacy rates, which is a very real issue here in the RGV, and this initiative can make a real difference. The county of Hidalgo will be funding the four hundred thousand dollars for this project. We have an interlocal in place between the county of Hidalgo and the City of Mission that was approved by city council on February twenty-seventh, two thousand and seventeen. This agreement allows the county to continue to pay funds on behalf of and disperse funds to Spear Memorial Library for contractual services and library materials.
Thank you. We do need a motion to authorize them to purchase the, the soul source from Recorded Books for the electronic service and library material.
So moved, Mayor.
Second.
Do we have a motion and a second? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Yes, motion carries. Four point nine.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council members. I come before you seeking approval of interlocal agreement between the City of Mission and the county of Hidalgo. The City of Mission and the county of, in Hidalgo County desire to cooperate in making needed asphalt overlay improvements at various locations throughout the City of Mission. Asphalt overlay includes the following streets. Los Ebanos Road from Mile Two North to the city limits, north to the city limit. Mayberry Road from Mile Two North, north to the city limit. Bryant Road from Mile Two North, north to the city limit. Stewart Road from Mile Two North, north to the city limit. Glasscock Road from Mile Two North, north to our city limit. And Anzalduas Drive from FM four ninety-four, south to the Levy Road within the City of Mission city limits. The City of Mission will provide approximately two hundred and eighty thousand dollars in materials, while the county of Hidalgo will provide labor and machinery and equipment for this project. Staff recommendation is approval of interlocal agreement with the county of Hidalgo.
We do need a motion to approve the...
So moved, Mayor.
Second.
Do we have a motion and a second? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Yes, motion carries. Item ten.
Yes, Mayor, City Council members. Item four point ten is the approval, approval to purchase two ten-inch Gorman-Rub pumps for the wastewater treatment plant main lift station from a soul-source vendor. Staff is recommending to purchase two ten-inch sixty horsepower Gorman-Rub pumps from Precision Pump Systems, a soul-source vendor. Precision Pump Systems, Gorman-Rub pumps will be used by the wastewater treatment plant to replace two original pumps installed in two thousand and five. Four out of the six pumps in existence have been replaced with Gorman-Rub pumps in the last three years. Attaches a soul-source letter from vendor Precision Pump System and the list of equipment to be purchased. Staff recommendation is the authorization to purchase equipment from a soul-source vendor, and the total estimated cost, Mayor, is forty-five thousand dollars for both pumps.
We do need a motion to approve the purchase.
Want to approve?
From a soul-source vendor. We do have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Yes, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Four eleven. Mr. Benson.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Item four point one-one, is there authorization to purchase equipment via by-board contract for Conway underpass lighting? Staff is seeking authorization to purchase equipment via by-board contract number four three seven dash one-three from Facility Solutions Group for Conway under, underpass lighting. Authorization is to purchase for Facilities, from Facility Solutions Group, excuse me. The cost of this project is twenty-nine thousand, eight hundred and sixty dollars.
We do need a motion to approve the authorization?
So moved, Mayor.
We do have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Yes, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Benson. Four twelve, Budget Amendments from the General Fund.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. Item four twelve is for the approval of the attached budget amendment from the General Fund. This amendment is related to item four point eight. It is a request to allocate four hundred thousand dollars in revenues and appropriations. The amendment will allocate funds being fully reimbursed by the county of Hidalgo for contractual services and media expense to purchase the items necessary for the electronic library program that will be used by patrons of the library system. This item is now before you.
We do have a motion.
Want to approve, Mayor?
Second.
A second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Yes, motion carries. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Item four point thirteen is approval, we're seeking approval for an interlocal agreement with the City of Mission and City of Hardingen. City of Mission and City of Hardingen desire to enter into this agreement where Hardingen is the owner of an air curtain incinerator used for the purpose of reducing particulate matter which results from burning and thus controlling pollution. Hardingen desires to declare this said incinerator surplus and further convey the said equipment to the Mission for a cost of five thousand dollars. The Hardingen and Mission agree that the said equipment will be sold as a present condition, and that in the present condition, the incinerator is in working order, with the exception of some minor maintenance and repairs. Mission agrees to arrange and pay for the cost of transportation of the incinerator for, from its current location and to the location designated by the City of Mission. Staff recommendation at this time is the approval of the interlocal agreement.
We do need a motion to go ahead and approve the interlocal?
Want to approve?
Second.
We do have a motion and a second to go ahead and approve the interlocal between the City of Mission and Hardingen. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Chief.
Mr. Mayor, on this item, item four point one-four, I would ask that the city council consider going into executive session pursuant to consultation with attorney exception.
We do need a motion to go into executive session?
Mayor, I want to move that we move to executive session pursuant to VTCA Government Code, Section five-five-one, point zero-zero-one.
Second.
The motion is second to go into executive session. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Yes, motion carries.
Mayor, I want to...
Second.
Motion is second to reconvene. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Yes, motion carries. We have some recommendations.
Mayor, City Council, good afternoon. I do have four point fourteen. This is the agenda item of an approval of interlocal cooperation agreement between the City of Mission and the City of McAllen and City of Hidalgo regarding good faith negotiations and commitment to feasibility study for the Madero Vehicular Bridge. As you know, the Cities of Mission, Hidalgo, and McAllen agreed to enter into a good faith negotiations of a comprehensive agreement to be known as the Madero Bridge Agreement. The Madero Bridge Agreement sets out the terms of agreement to include the acquisition of property, the terms of bond issuance, the parties' participations and limitations, and also the creation of the Bridge Board and the Madero, allocation in percentages, and all other necessary terms. The approval of the interlocal agreement, Mayor, is, we recommend that is subject to the City of McAllen's approval as well, and the approval by the Anzalduas Bridge Board of a reimbursement agreement regarding the feasibility study.
Yes.
I move for approval.
Second.
They have a motion and a second to go ahead and approve the interlocal agreement. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Yes, Mayor, on item seven point one, this is the consideration of agreement with Rio Valley Switching Company regarding the conveyance of a property interest in a point one zero two acre tract of land being portions of Cummings Avenue and Eighth Street, original townsite of Mission, and the opening of Oble. If the council wished take action, we would need a motion to approve Resolution Number fifteen zero seven, authorizing the mayor and her city manager to further negotiate and execute the agreement and all necessary conveyance documents with Rio Valley Switching Company regarding the conveyance of the easement interest in a point one zero two acre tract of land being portions of Cummings Avenue and Eighth Street, original townsite of Mission, and in consideration thereof, the reopening of Oble Crossing and further closure of Crossing off Business eighty-three and Leonode Street pursuant to the terms set out in the agreement.
Mayor, I move that we accept the motion of what he said.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second to go ahead and accept the recommendation. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Yes, motion carries.
The next item, Mayor, is item seven point one B, and this is an item dealing with the consideration of requests regarding liens at Lot Five, Block Thirty-three, original townsite, and pursuant to executive session. It appears the direction is to allow the city manager to act pursuant to his current authority under the ordinances, so no action is necessary. On item seven point two A, consideration of settlement agreement in Highmark Construction Company LLC versus City of Mission Texas, Cause Number C seventeen fifty-two sixteen F, in the three thirty-second District Court, Hidalgo County, Texas. If the council wished take action on this one, we would need a motion to authorize the mayor and or city manager to accept and execute the settlement agreement in Highmark Construction Company versus City of Mission, Cause Number C seventeen fifty-two sixteen F, in the three thirty-second District Court pursuant to discussions in executive session, and further authorize the city manager or designate to perform all administrative tasks necessary to execute the terms of the settlement.
So moved, Mayor.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second to go ahead and do what?
This is to authorize the mayor and city manager to accept and execute the settlement agreement.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Yes, motion carries.
No other items, Mayor.
We end that as the last item, we'll ask that we go have a motion to...
So moved, Mayor.
Second.
We have a motion, second.